The council, pre-council meeting for Monday, August the 11th. Item number one, Kay, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mrs. Sanyuk.
Here.
Mr. Cook. Mr. Knudsen.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present. Sitting in for Mr. Berlowitz today is Mr. Severson. Item two, this meeting will be conducted according to the Opens Meeting Act posted the entry to the council chambers. Item three, additional items. Three A, city administrators' report. Comments must be limited to the items on the current city administrators' report. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this is for the Parks Department or for Jeff. The pool maintenance that's stipulated in the Parks report, does that include any deficiencies in construction or ADA that was referenced prior to this?
Mr. Roberts, would you like to answer that or Mr. Francis?
All of that stating is just the basic pool maintenance that was done during the past two-week period.
So we're not addressing any of the ADA concerns or deficiencies stated in the Aquatics study?
We will be, but that's just the basic maintenance is all that I was addressing in that for the upkeep, to keep the pools up and running. But Pat and I did have a conversation this morning about what we're going to do and prioritizing that for this fall and next spring.
All right, thanks, sir.
Are there any other questions? See none, we'll move on to item number four, review and discussion without action of items on the agenda of the regular council meeting this evening at 6:00 PM. I'll begin with item number three, the approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. Three A, approval of agenda. B, approval of consent agenda. C, approval of the minutes of the July 28, 2014 regular and pre-council meeting of the City Council. Item four, approval of claims. Five, special presentation, none. Item six, liquor license. Six A, application of Gross Catholic High School for a special designated liquor license. B, application of Bimal Adhikari, who knows how to say that?
Adhikari.
Adhikari, President Nebraska Nepalese Society for Special Designated Liquor License. Six C, application of Willow Springs Bottling Company Doing Businesses Cornhusker Beverage for Special Designated Liquor License. Six D, application of Station House Inc. for Special Designated Liquor License. Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading. Seven A, ordinance number 3772. B, ordinance 3773. D, 3775. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, on fences, is there a distinction between fences that are solid and you can't see through and those chain link fences that you still have visibility through? Because I'm more okay with a fence you can see through being closer to a corner, but a fence you can't see through, there seems to be a distinction in terms of visibility, but I don't know that there's any in the code.
Any fence that's in the front yard, which would be the area where the site triangle is, is required to be at least 50% open. So we tell people either a chain link fence or a picket-type fence. That would be required in the front yard. Once you're behind the front of the house, you can go to a solid fence.
So even though it may not be right here, it's listed in the fencing and it's specific?
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions for 3775? See none. E, ordinance number 3776. Eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading, ordinance number 3778. Nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading, none. And public hearing on matters other than ordinance. And a request for conditional use permit. Mr. Preister.
Do you know, Chris, if the applicant is going to be here tonight?
I expect him to be here. He's been at all the planning commission meetings.
Okay, I would hope somebody's here because I think there's some questions. I have a couple at least, but hopefully somebody will be.
Like I said, I certainly expect him to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Item 11, resolutions. 11A, Resolution 2014-22. Miss Sanyuk.
What was the recommendation of the Audit Committee? I was not at the last meeting.
Mr. Severson.
The recommendation was to go with the current auditing firm, BKD, for five years because of the quality and because of the price.
And that committee consists of Mr. Cook?
Mr. Cook, Mr. Blazek from Bellevue University, and Mr. Samborn.
Okay, thank you.
Prior councilman.
Are there any other questions? I believe someone's here from that Audit Committee, the Audit Team. See none, we'll move on to item number 12, current business. 12A, approval of the following reappointment to the boards. One, Ralph Gladback, Morgan Sykes to the Planning Commission for three-year term. Two, Ronald Gasper to the Bellevue Housing Authority for a five-year term. Three, Ralph Gladback to the Building Board of Review for a five-year term. Four, Katie Peterson to the Bellevue Library Advisory Board for a five-year term. B, acknowledge the nomination of Eric Witz for appointment to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. C, approval to seek bids for the next phases of American Heroes Park. D, Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, ma'am. Jeff, I noticed in the oratory that was provided with this, we're about $104,000 over what we budgeted, I believe. I know this is just going out to seek bids. Do you anticipate those bids to be similar within that range?
Yeah, because really the price of steel hasn't varied any from the last time we put that out. That bid, or that estimate was put in prior to this going out for bid, the first time it was already in this two-year budget, and that's why it's never been adjusted. But we're expecting it to come in that high again.
Any other questions on that item? E, approve of release and to refill the deed of reconveniency for CDBG housing rehab. F, approval of documents to release the city's lead for CDBG housing rehab. G, accept bids and award contract for CDBG owner occupied housing rehabilitation project. H, accept bids and award contract for CDBG owner occupied housing rehabilitation project. And I, request to purchase column list for the Fleet Maintenance Department. Take us back to the pre-council agenda. Item number five, executive session. Miss Sanyuk.
For the protection of the public interest, I move that we go into executive session to discuss real estate negotiations for city properties located at 2216 through 2218 Franklin Street and 210 through 204 West Mission Avenue.
Second.
And negotiations on the Convention Conference Center.
Second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
Would you all vote again, please? There we go. All voted yes.
Thank you. It is now 1:40, and we will go into executive session where our discussion will be restricted to as stated by Councilmember Sanyuk. Thank you. And welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, August the 11th, 2014. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Alvin Torres, Christ Community Church, Sarpy Campus, meeting at Bellevue University. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Father, we want to thank you, Lord, not just for today, but for the privilege that we have to be able to be a part of a system of government that allows us to live freely. I pray that you would give these men and women wisdom and grace as they make decisions that affect the hundreds, if not thousands, of people. God, we pray that your grace would be on us all, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Torres. Item number two, Kay, could you please call roll? Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mrs. Sanyuk.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Knudsen.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present. We have Mr. Berlowitz absent this evening, but we do have Mr. Rich Severson here this evening. Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Opens Meetings Act posted the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. Three A, approval of agenda. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Three B, approval of consent agenda. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item three C is under consent. Item four, consent. Item five, none. Item six, liquor license. Six A, application of Gross Catholic High School for a special designated liquor license to sell beer at a fundraiser on October 25, 2014, from 6:00 PM until 11:30 PM at 7700 South 48th Street. I'll now open for public hearing on this matter. Anyone wishing to speak, or is there someone here to represent?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Hello.
If you want to state your name and address.
My name is Nate Novotny. My address is 2521 South 48th Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. If you could please sign in. Is there any questions from the council? Not, I'll go ahead and open for public meeting on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for this application from Gross Catholic High School for a special designated liquor license to sell beer at a fundraiser on October 25, 2014, from 6:00 PM until 11:30 PM at 7700 South 48th Street here in Bellevue.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Knudsen. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six B, application of Bimal Adhikari, President Nebraska Nepalese Society for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits at a reception from 12:00 PM until 12:00 AM on October the 18th, 2014, Bellevue University Humanities Building, 1,000 Galvin Road, South Bellevue. Is there anyone here from the Nepalese Society? See none, I'll go ahead and open up for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Were there wishes of the council? Miss Sanyuk.
Motion to approve recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for Bimal Adhikari, President of the Nebraska Nepalese Society for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits at a reception from 12:00 PM until 12:00 AM on October 18th, 2014, at Bellevue University.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Six C, application of Willow Springs Bottling Company Doing Businesses Cornhusker Beverage for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, at a fundraiser for Sounds of Freedom from 10:00 AM until 12:00 AM on September 13th in the upper parking lot of Bellevue University. Is anyone here to represent?
Good evening. My name's Jim Subject. I'm the manager of Cornhusker Beverage Mart. This is my 50th, excuse me, 43rd year being the manager. It's basically a fundraiser, and the donations or the funds from this fundraiser is going to go toward helping wounded warriors.
Thank you. If you could just please sign in. At this time, I'll open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for this application from Willow Springs Bottling Company, DBA Cornhusker Beverage, for a special designated liquor license to sell beer and wine at a fundraiser for Sounds of Freedom from 10:00 AM until 12:00 AM on September 13th, 2014, specifically in the upper parking lot of Bellevue University.
Second.
And second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Six D, application of Station House Inc. for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits in the parking lot of Bellevue Volunteer Firefighters' Hall, 2108 Franklin Street, from 4:00 PM until 1:00 AM on August 29th, 2014. Is there anyone here to represent?
Dee Graves for the Station House at Sokol Park. We are asking for an SDL for that evening to sponsor a car show on Franklin Street right in front of the Firefighters' Hall from 4:00 to 9:00 PM is when the car show is. It's a show and shine. Anyone with any type of vehicle, two wheels, four wheels, golf cart, bicycle, motorcycle, car, truck, is welcome to bring their buggy down and with the idea that it is to get everybody together in downtown Bellevue.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Carmichael.
I'd like to make a recommendation of the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for the application of the Station House Inc. for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits in the parking lot of the Bellevue Volunteer Firefighters' Hall, 2108 Franklin Street, from 4:00 PM to 1:00 AM on August 29th, 2014.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading. Seven A, ordinance number 3772. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3772, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article III of Ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 25th Street between Rose Lane Road and Virginia Street, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sanyuk.
Motion to approve ordinance number 3772.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question for Mr. Shuchuk. We only had one person that I'm aware of who had any concerns, and that was about traffic. And I'm assuming that the existing zoning from business would probably create as much traffic as going to the residential, but can you just talk a little bit about traffic and what impact may have in this zoning change?
Well, with the zoning changes it is and it just being one lot, they can only put up to a fourplex on the lot now if the zoning is approved, whereas under the commercial zoning, there are a lot of things that go there that I'd say would definitely have a much greater impact on traffic than the change of zone. Now, in the future, they may, the purchaser of the property may come in either to rezone or subdivide the property into numerous lots. We don't know what's going to happen with that. Again, as Mr. Dunn said at the public hearing, they're just trying to sell the property. And at that point in time, if there is either a zoning change, another zoning change to a more dense or a site plan approval with more dwellings, we can certainly look at the traffic there, and if there is an impact there, we can require improvements at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item seven B, ordinance number 3773. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3773, an ordinance to amend Section 5.17, ordinance number 3619, the Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to planned unit developments. To repeal such section is heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. Were there wishes of the council? Miss Sanyuk.
Motion to approve ordinance number 3773.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Seven C, ordinance number 3774. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3774, an ordinance to amend Section 2.22, ordinance number 3619, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to definitions. To repeal such section is heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 3774.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? Mr. Carmichael.
I would like to further make an amendment to the definition of site triangle to change the 30-feet dimension along each curb to 45-feet.
We have a second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion?
All voted yes.
Thank you. And now we need to vote on as amended.
Right.
Please vote.
And all voted yes.
Thank you. Item seven D, ordinance number 3775. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3775, an ordinance to amend Section 9.09, ordinance number 3619, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to fences. To repeal such section is heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. Were there wishes of the council? Mr. Carmichael.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 3775.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knudsen. Any discussion? Mr. Carmichael.
Chris, do we need to amend this ordinance also under the site triangle definition?
Yes, you would. On the second page of the ordinance, under 9.09.06, again, change the 30 to 45. That way it'll be consistent with what you just did.
Under 9.05. I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't hear you.
Change the 30 to 45.
Okay.
Mr. Carmichael.
I have it now, Mayor. I'd like to amend ordinance 3775 to change the definition in Section 9.09.06 from 30 to 45 feet.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knudsen. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. And as amended, please, any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item seven E, ordinance number 3776. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3776, an ordinance to amend Section 5.12, ordinance number 3619, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to the RG-50, General Residential Zoning District. To repeal such section is heretofore existing and to provide for an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. Wishes of the council? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number 3776.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Seven F, ordinance number 3777. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3777, an ordinance to amend Section 7-24, ordinance number 3704, the subdivision ordinance relating to the Park Development Fund. To repeal such section is heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, motion to approve ordinance number 3777.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for a public hearing, second reading. Eight A, ordinance number 3778. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3778, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number 3695, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Severson.
Mayor, I think Councilwoman Sanyuk is going to read a short prepared statement, and then after that, we're going to have our human resource director get up and say a few words, and hopefully it will provide a little more perspective on the issue for the council and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Severson. Miss Sanyuk.
I was ill at the last meeting, so I really didn't have a good understanding of this ordinance until I came up and spoke with staff. And so, as much for my benefit as that of the public, I'd like to just kind of give my simplistic summary of my understanding, and staff, jump in if I get off track here. But this all began with state statute, Statute 48-818, which basically states that cities must pay comparable and fair wages to employees, or that city could be taken to court, basically the Court of Industrial Relations or the CIR. And so Bellevue decided, because we haven't looked a very long time at our salaries that we're paying, well, how do we know if we're fair and comparable while you look at other cities? So we hired an outside company, Mr. Paul Esman from Lincoln, to look at seven cities and develop a pay range for us that tells us for comparable positions. This is amongst those other cities, this is what he found the lowest salary to be paid, and here's what he found the highest salary to be paid. And within that range, basically what it tells us, Bellevue, the city of Bellevue, is are we in the ballpark? Are we in the ballpark for paying what other cities are paying for comparable job descriptions? And it also lets us know, not only are we in the ballpark, but how much might we be underpaying, how might we be overpaying? But it also gives us an idea of our maximum liability. In other words, if we should be taken to court by one of our bargaining units because they say we're not paying fair or comparable wages, this lets us know, would we be likely to win or lose that lawsuit? This does not mean that for every position listed, those people are going to get a raise. It certainly does not mean that. But it basically tells us, are we in the ballpark for what we're paying as compared to other cities of a comparable size in population? So I want to make sure that before people come to the microphone, they understand that, as I did not at first when this first came out on the agenda. But Mr. Berlowitz, who isn't able to be here tonight, also prepared a little summary, and let me read that to you and see if it jives with what I just told you. This ordinance, number 3778, reflects salary and wage ranges for employee positions covered under existing collective bargaining unit contracts and memorandum of understanding. In other words, when you take a look at this ordinance, it says Bellevue Employees Association, effective October 1st, 2012. We haven't listed the wages we found in the study because we're still negotiating or bargaining with that unit. So we're not going to list the information that we found out that might not be, that could be detrimental to us, should we make that publicly known. So also for Bellevue Professional Management Association, effective October 1st, 2009, those are the current ranges. Again, those are not what we found in the study, as we're not going to give out our playbook, so to speak, before the bargaining takes place. But the other ones listed, it reflects salary and wage ranges for new positions created since the previous compensation ordinance was adopted in December of 2012. It reflects updated salary/wage ranges for all unclassified or non-union positions based on. on a result of a recent wage and benefit comparability study conducted in accordance with requirements, guidelines, and criteria set forth in state statute, chapter forty-eight, article eight eighteen, and applicable decisions of the Commission of Industrial Relations. State statute forty-eight eight eighteen requires that local government entities, i.e. cities or municipalities, provide rates of pay and conditions of employment which are comparable to the prevalent wage rates paid and conditions of employment maintained for same or similar work of works, of workers exhibiting like or similar skills under the same or similar working conditions. The comparability study was performed by a Nebraska consultant, highly qualified and experienced in the field of wage and benefit comparative analyses. So, that's Mr. Burlowitz's summary, and, and Karen Jackson, I believe, now is going to give a little information.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sanyuk. Thank you. Ms. Jackson, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. You did a very good job explaining that, Ms. Sanyuk. So, I have a few more things I could add to that, that maybe weren't covered, just having been involved in this process with administration from the beginning, that we strove to make sure when we selected those seven cities that were in the study, that they would be a good representation, that they would have, that they could hold up in court, that we weren't just picking the cities that had the lowest wages, or of course, the cities with the highest, but a good, across-the-board representation of comparable cities to Bellevue. So, that was stressed in the selection of those cities. Also, we wanted to make sure, obviously, that that would hold up in court if, if we were ever challenged in that. We also had to update and validate this information to attract and retain quality employees. We have to be competitive in the market, and if we don't have competitive wages, you know, that's going to hurt us as we hire and retain employees that, that we have. Also, there, before these proposes, or proposal could be brought forward to you for consideration, we had to do a lot of preparation work. I think there was a question out there, why did it take so long? Dan's been here for three years, and, you know, to get this together for the ordinance. Well, first of all, we had to implement a performance management system. The city had been without one for several years, and we hoped to eventually tie the performance to pay. And without a performance evaluation system in place that could make that happen, we had to make sure that was there first and foremost. So, we had to develop that policy, get your approval of that policy, implement the training to department heads, directors, and all the city staff, and by the, and then actually implement it. So, that whole process took approximately a year to get, get that whole thing in place. Second, all the city's job descriptions had to be updated. There was over a hundred of those, which was a pretty tedious process, but we needed to make sure that they reflected the current job duties of all city employees. So, that process went underway and took, again, about another year to get that completed. It was very lengthy. Employees had their input into all those job descriptions. We wanted to make sure those were accurate and up to date before that was sent in with the information to our, our contractor to make sure that what we were comparing was accurate. Okay? Because as was stated, we're not just comparing job titles, we're actually comparing job duties, and that there has to be at least a seventy percent match of like job duties in those job descriptions for him to use them as a comparable position. And then, once all that data was collected, our department put in the information, our salary information, benefit information was provided for the comparison to the other seven cities, and then that was all sent off to him. And then it took about six to eight months approximately to get all that research done on his side, and then sent back to us with the final outcome of the, of the, the study. So, that's what we're using now, and it's just crucial that we keep our compensation rates competitive, both for hiring purposes and to avoid litigation over wages. We also feel that this is crucial in our contract negotiations, as is already mentioned, so that we have this data available, so that we have the ability to negotiate wages with each union more prudently with validated compensation information.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Councilwoman Blood.
I do have a little, additional question about criteria, and I understand the criteria based on the job descriptions.
Correct.
And I know that you can't show me all of your cards, because some of this information has to be kept close to the vest.
Correct.
But generally speaking, what would you say the upper-end median income was for the, the highest numbers? Do you, do you know what the median income was for that community?
Oh, off the top of my head, I don't recall. Rich, do you happen to know that?
I did not bring the study with me, but what you're, you're trying to ask is, what...
Median income is important in a municipality. For instance, cost of living. For instance, if you used a community such as Zankiny or Des Moines in those, in that area, the, the median income is almost twice what it is in Bellevue. And so, I'm just trying to get a perspective of what your upper median income was compared to your lowest median income. I don't need the names of the communities, I don't need, I, I understand everything else in between, but for me to get my head wrapped around it and to know that, that what we're doing is something that I feel comfortable supporting, I, I'd like to know median income. So, I'm sure we can get that to her.
We can.
But I have to go behind a closed door to look at it.
Yes, however...
That's why I'm asking not necessarily the names of the cities, I just kind of want to know a range.
It wasn't just based on population, all those factors were considered.
No, no, and I understand that, but, and I'm not talking about population, I'm talking about median income. Because what you pay a person, when, when you do this type of, of research, is, is also based on the cost of living within that community. What is your median income in Bellevue? Do you know what that is?
The median income right now is...
At forty-six thousand right now.
I was going to say, near fifty.
At fifty now.
High, high forties.
Much lower than Papillion, I know.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Right.
You know, I'm trying to put in perspective.
Go ahead, Rich.
One way that I can sort of answer that question is, you're going to find, if you look at those cities, there may be some higher median income in there.
And there should be, and lower.
And there's going to be lower, but we didn't necessarily look at that and look at the wages and ask our consultant, just give me the lowest wages possible. As a finance director, love to do that, but...
And I understand that.
We did not do that. We said, i-if he had a choice, and he said, which one do you want, we would ask, which one better supports our case in front of the CIR? And we'd let him use his professional judgment without regard to what the median income was or what the range of those salaries were. We, we tried to make an unbiased assessment of that, and we wanted the best city in our array that would protect us the most down in Lincoln.
I, I hear what you're saying, and, and I agree. We certainly, we've done a really good job of not being sued the last few years, because we're getting our ducks in a row. We've worked really hard to do that. And, and I, I praise the staff, the administration, and that's something that we've been pounding in since we came on in two thousand eight for some of the original council members. However, that's still a part of the puzzle that, that I, I need to see. So, I guess the only way I'm ever going to get to see it is if I find time to go upstairs and...
And we'll be happy to show them. And we'll have that information available for you.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Jackson, thank you. I, I appreciate especially that you did the chronology, that you unfolded the process, because this is essentially one step in an ongoing process of the city becoming more professional, not just making decisions with some supervisor automatically wanting to give a raise based on friendship or who knows what. We're professionalizing all of our operations. You've gone through a list of those just to get to this point, and I'm glad you mentioned this is one more step. So, thank you for that. And I think Councilwoman Sanyuk did an excellent job of outlining the information and going over it, too. My, my question is, and we're not discussing the cities or anything, but we did an array of some cities, and for all of these positions, we didn't just pick and choose this city or this city, correct?
Correct. All the sa, all cities received all the same job descriptions. It was equal across the board, the information they received. We didn't just pick and choose.
That, that was what I wanted to clarify. It's consistent for all of those cities for all of the same positions.
Correct.
But, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? See none? I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
I go to the pre-council meetings, and Mr. Burlowitz talked about this a few weeks back, and when he talked, the more I heard him speak, the more I was pretty sure that this shouldn't be done at all, at least not in such a big hurry. Now, you've explained some more things, which is, is good, but I think definitely that the public and the council should have at least another two weeks to digest this. And so, I would propose that you would delay the second reading until the next meeting and give us all the chance to look into this, including myself, but all, everybody else, too, because I'm sure there's a lot of questions about this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Blood.
Um, Mr. Frederick?
Frederick?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Um, you, you do understand that there's three readings to every ordinance today, is the second reading and the public hearing, so the next one would be the third reading in two weeks?
I understand that.
So, that two weeks between the second and third reading, you don't think is sufficient?
Well, it gives you, it gives you time to look into it, but then the public doesn't have any input. You know, in other words, we have, all we can do then is just wait for your vote, if we, well, I can just talk to one or two people, but there may be a lot of people here who are just hearing this, having explained a little bit for the first time, like you had questions on it, and you, and so you're going to go up and check on it yourself. Well, I think that we all, all the public should have that same opportunity to look at all this stuff and then come up and talk again at that point if they have any questions. So, all I'm saying is just to delay the, just delay the second reading until two, two weeks from now, and give them, give everybody a chance to digest it.
But as you well know, because you've asked for this before, we can also have the ability to, to, to waiver a procedure on the third reading, should anybody want to talk on it, right?
Say that again?
We also have the benefit of waiving our procedure, should anybody come on the third reading or request to speak on it. We do have that ability, because you've taken advantage of that before. So, I, I guess I'm just a little confused about why you'd ask us to extend it yet another two weeks when...
Are you going to guarantee that we can come up and speak in the third reading, then?
I, I am not going to guarantee you particularly anything, but I'm telling you that we have that ability to do so, should that happen.
If, if you're not going to guarantee it, I just soon have the opportunity for myself and anybody else in the public who wants to talk about it.
I, I hear what you're saying, but it's not my job to play let's make a deal. I hear what you're saying, I'm just letting you know that we do have...
It's not let's make a deal, just, just give the public some time.
Do you have that ability? And, and, and I think that the fact that we have already let the public know that we weren't going to rush through it on the first reading, it shows that we care what the public has to say. We're following the normal procedure that we follow with all ordinances. We're doing an excellent job of explaining this to the community. We've got the local media here, who I'm sure will also do an excellent job of explaining this to the community. I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just letting the public know that we do have that ability, so we don't fool them into thinking that we're trying to hide something or not get the information out to the public.
All this information you gave tonight is brand-new stuff to me and to many other people in the public. Now let them digest it, and let's talk about it two weeks from now. What's wrong with that? It's not going to make any difference for another two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick.
Let, let the people talk about it.
Thank you. Mr. Preister.
I, I was just going to say, this isn't the first we've seen it. This is the second reading, and that was the normal procedure. I think it was explained very well by Councilwoman Blood, so I just was going to say the same thing.
Thank you. Is there, are there others that would like to speak on this item?
Yes, I'm Dorothy Draper at nine eight zero seven, South Twenty-Fourth Street. And I just wanted to know if you could actually just give us the names of the cities that you, in the study? Can't do that either.
Mr. Severson, would you like to answer that?
I might need the attorney's help, but I think this is a work product, and we use it for negotiations, and so I'm afraid we can't divulge that amount of information.
Mr. Buckley?
Just to follow up on what Mr. Severson has said, this was a, a study that the city requested for the purposes of bargaining with the union. This is not any document that's regularly filed with the city, so it does not become a public record. If the information were made public, it could damage the city's positioning with the bargaining units.
Okay. I had another question, and I forgot what it was. All right, I might have to come back up, I can't think of it right now.
Councilwoman Blood.
Just to explain it further for this young lady, can you explain why that's an issue when we do negotiations? Why, why we can't share that information? How it would be detrimental to the taxpayers, or potentially could be detrimental?
Well, as Ms. Sanyuk alluded to earlier, if you make that information public, it basically shows our hand during negotiations, and it's, it's, so it would jeopardize our ability to negotiate with the information that we've requested from the professionals who prepared the study. It would basically render the time and expense of preparing it useless if it were made, if it were made public.
Thank you. Are there others who would like to speak on this item?
I live at nine eight oh seven, South Twenty-Fourth Street, and I understand the restrictions under which you have to do when you do this. And, and I understand that, why you go out and get comparables from other like cities. And, but there's a piece here that is, that gets, get less, gets left out every time this is done in any city, anywhere in the United States, not just here in Bellevue. And the, the Heritage Foundation, which produces very excellent research material for all levels of government, has stated repeatedly to Congress that at all levels of government, at federal, at state, at county, and city levels, that the salaries and benefits that are paid to public employees are substantially higher than in the private sector, by anywhere from ten to forty percent. And we've gone through a recession here from two thousand seven up till now, and I would venture to say I, I challenge anyone to come and show me a public servant who's had a reduction in their salary and benefits since two thousand seven. It just doesn't happen because of this process of going, doing comparables only from other cities. So, what happens is, we have government entities that are, they're, they're kind of, it's, it's an ocean, and the ocean just, the, the level just keeps rising and rising and rising because we're only comparing with other government entities. So, what happens is, our government employees paying benefits gets out of whack with what's happening in the private sector. And what I see missing here, and the laws in the Nebraska do not preclude us as a government entity from going out and doing comparable with the private sector. And that's what I've seen is missing from this study that you've paid for, and that you pay for every year, and that is that you do not give them direction to also provide you comparables with what the private sector is getting paid. Now, I may be wrong in that. Okay.
Councilwoman Blood.
Um, we do not do this every year. We've not done this for...
Well, I don't mean every year, but however often you do it.
We have never done it in...
We've, this is the first time we've done it, according to the guidelines set by state statute and the CIR.
Okay. Well, then I would say that what's missing is the comparable with the private sector, because it's not fair to us as taxpayers for you not to do that. You need to go out to the private sector and go back to the same company that you did this study, or another one who specializes in that, and get the comparables for the private sector. Because I'm paying taxes here, and everyone else is paying taxes here, and we deserve the best for our city, and to... And to me, this is only doing half the job the way you're doing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Draper. Ms. Sanyuk.
Question for Mr. Buckley. If we were to be taken to court by either a union or, or employees who feel they are not being pair, paid fair wages, would the court allow a comparison to the private sector? My understanding is that the way statute is written, it would not. But perhaps I'm wrong. My guess would be that, that, that you might not be allowed to compare to private sector.
I was just taking a quick look at the statute. And yes, the Commission on Industrial Relations will take a look at the comparability of other municipalities, other comparable municipalities in determining whether or not it's fair.
So I, Mr. Draper, if you can get the state senators down in Lincoln to agree, to agree to let us, let us compare wages with, with private sector, go for it.
Is that, nobody's ever tried it. What we're saying is nobody has ever had the gall to go up to the commission and say, "Look, we did this comparison also with the private sector. And we've taken the information from both studies and we use both to make our decision." And everyone is standing up and saying, "Oh, we're afraid we're going to get sued. We're afraid we're going to get sued." And in the meantime, we're paying out money that we probably don't need to be paying out and running scared. And, you know, we're a, a large city, third largest in the state. And normally what happens when we go out to hire people, where do we get them from? We get them from smaller cities. We don't go out to the private sector. So I'm just, I'm asking you to step up to the plate and be willing to go to the commission and say, "This is what we did," and see what they say. It's, it's not, I mean, it's, it's not going to cost that much money to do a comparability with the, with the private sector. And I dare say that the money we could potentially save would be more than offset from what the cost is for you to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak at this time on this item? See none, I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading will be the third Monday, Monday, which is Monday, August the 25th. Item number nine, ordinance for deduction, first reading none. Item number 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. 10A, request for a conditional use permit for construction of a storage facility at 25th and Chandler. Welcome.
Niraj Agarwal here for the applicant, 105 North 31st Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska.
Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, may I have a question?
Yes, I'll open for public hearing.
Um, where does your client stand on the request for the matte color on the doors?
That's an issue where we're, I guess, open for compromise. I know in the planning recommendation, Mr. Ack, we had made a motion subject to having the, I guess, both the doors and the roof be earth tone colors. Uh, we understand the request for this as visual impact has been an issue that's been raised. Uh, the client has, I guess, respectfully stated that based on prior developments, we'd like to keep the colors as is. Um, the doors being a royal blue, I brought samples we can pass around. And the roof being a charcoal color. I believe part of the issue last time at the planning hearing was the pictures that were provided weren't too clear. They're very small renderings. So there's question about whether the blue was a garish blue. And I think upon closer examination, council members maybe see that it's not really garish at all. We've used this color scheme for 10 facilities in the past.
Is your color scheme a branding mechanism?
Yes.
So you have other facilities that are basically comparable colors? And so what you're trying to do is keep that branding?
Exactly. Yes, we have, I believe, nine to 10 other facilities in Nebraska and Iowa.
And you said you have something that we can see?
Yes, of course. I can pass these around. Actually, so I've marked very basically and can pass it.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I assume along 25th Street, there will be sidewalks put in?
Yes.
One of the issues that was raised was the children and the intersection and traffic. But there won't be any ingress egress on Chandler. It'll all be coming out of 25th.
Correct, yes.
And there will be sidewalks there and the light is timed. So it should, I'm assuming, be no different than your other facilities?
And I'm guessing, and it is helpful to see the colors.
I'm guessing that people coming in and out of storage facilities are all different times of the day, not necessarily when children are coming or going specifically?
Correct. And in our experience, they've, we found that they typically don't come that often. But it's no set time per day. Um, but it's typically not more than once or twice a month. So I don't believe that should be an issue as far as traffic.
Okay. And Kenneth Suk, who apparently lives just to the east of the property, also had a concern about drainage, that currently some drainage comes off of the, the existing grass-
Correct.
-in sight and down through his property. Can you tell us how that's being addressed?
Of course. Oh, we've met, actually just as recently as today, to address that again with our construction team. Um, and we do have individuals who are addressing that specifically. So I think most likely would be a redesign to address any overflow issues in that basin area. So that will be addressed immediately.
That'll be addressed in the construction?
Yes.
If you have a problem later, or if he has a problem later, I should say, you're willing to work with him to address that then?
Of course, yes.
And break-ins was a, a concern. It looks like it's fenced all the way around?
Yes.
And that wasn't just a picture? That's what you're planning?
Yes.
Okay. And will there be security cameras?
Yes, uh, this is comparable to our other facilities. So they're fairly state of the art. There's lighting and security throughout each facility. And this will be no different.
And the images that I see show a brick or a stucco concrete kind of facade? And that will be on the two main structures on both stories?
Yes. As part of a lengthy discussion with the planning department, as far as the commission members, I guess, desires to see something a bit different than the typical facility. I know visual impact was key. So we did the best on our part to accommodate issues by adding brick and I believe a various facade kind of issues and changing the elevation as well.
They look very appealing to me from what I see. The, the lower level will be a garage, so you can bring things in and out of the garage door. What will be on the second story?
Uh, just, it will be a two-story storage unit. So it'll just be accessible as well, based on the grading of the site.
Mr. Shuchak.
It, it's built on a hill. The one, each side, you know, the, the west side, you can drive into, there'll be garage doors on the west side. And then it slopes down. So the lower level of the east side also has the garage doors.
Okay. I didn't see that in the picture. So it, it will be accessible the same way, both sides. It's just one side will appear different.
Correct.
That, that helps. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Niraj.
Good evening.
Only question I have, uh, what type of lighting scheme do you have in the, in the nighttime with respect to pole lights? Are they going to, going to be downshin, downshining lights? Are they going to be shining across the panorama of the, of the buildings?
Um, that I can't speak to with specificity. I just know there will be, I guess, pole lights throughout. As far as how they shine, I can't, can we speak to that right now? But we can get that information for you.
Well, that, that would be the one concern I would have for the residents to the north and east and also the newer homes to the south.
No, I think we've discussed that. I know, um, visual impact on the surrounding residents, given that there's multifamily and just housing in that vicinity. We've made sure that any lighting scheme won't cause any, I guess, adverse visual impact.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cook.
Chris Shuchak. Um, the planning department, planning commission, made reference to earth tone colors. Did they see the colors that the gentleman showed us today? Or what was the reason behind that?
Uh, they saw, as far as the garage doors, one of the depictions was a, I'm not seeing, I'm not sure what you've got. Was it much brighter blue than I think you might normally see? I, again, I don't see what you've got.
He's got it back.
Got it back?
Yeah.
I, I think the picture may have looked a little bit brighter on, on the, the artist's rendering. And there was concern about just visual impact all around for, on these storage units. They wanted something a little muted, I think was the term they used on the garage doors. I mean, say, the garage doors probably are not going to be very visible from off the site because of the fence that is surrounding the, the entire property. Um, the other item was the, um, the roof color. And typically, we don't regulate or really have anything to do with that. I, I think there may have been concern about a metal roof that would have been shiny. And that, that's why they asked for a, a, a flat type paint and, and, you know, again, the, the earth tone. So it's not a bright, either reflection of the roof or, or something that's going to be visually unappealing to, especially the apartment dwellers who are like on the third floor, adjacent to them. And one other thing, um, we, this was reviewed throughout the entire process. Tammy, who looks at all of our building permits and really does all the regulations as far as design standards. She never felt that the, the colors on here were, I'll say, violation of our design standards. We have a, a provision regarding garish colors. And, and she never considered the, the blue on these to be garish, in her opinion. That, that she would have recommended, uh, or asked for a change in the color of the, of the doors.
Mr. Preister.
I'm glad that, thank you, Mayor. Glad that Mr. Cook, or Mr. Carmichael brought up the, the lighting. Because we, not long ago, changed some of our standards. And it was specifically listed and required that lights shine directly down and not out. Would that change that we did, Chris, does that also apply to these developments? I believe it does.
Yes, it would.
Yeah. Okay. So we've taken care of that and you would have to follow those guidelines.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Good point for the neighbors.
Are there any other questions from the council? Anything else you would like to add?
No.
If not, I'll go, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sanyuk.
Oh, I just wanted to say, because the addition of a second story, in my opinion, would have an even greater visual impact on the surrounding properties, my vote will be no.
I'll open for public hearing for others. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Please do so. You could go ahead and stand and step aside. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to say, I learned my lesson in the Army. I just want to make sure that all these things that he just verbally agreed to actually get written down and make him sign it. Because that's the best way to have recourse. I know that, um, talk is cheap sometimes. And these neighbors and things that are expected and these fulfillments and these promises, I just want to make sure that you have a way to enforce it. So when she gets all that written down to make him sign it, I'd really appreciate that.
Are there others who would like to speak on this time? Mr. Preister.
Chris, could you comment on that? Because all this has to be in, in the-
We, we do have a-
It's all in writing.
Conditional use permit agreement. It's based on the site plan. Other items, such as the lighting, are based on a portion of the city code. Whether they sign anything or not, when the, when the building permit comes in and when they're constructed, they're going to have to follow those things. Um, drainage, if what they're doing causes a, a problem with adjoining properties, we do have a public works inspector who can go out and take a look at those items. They do have a detention area on the east end of the property. The drainage has been reviewed by the, the public works engineer. Hopefully, there won't be any problems in the future. But if there are, we do have a way of addressing that. But again, some of these items would be in the conditional use permit agreement that is signed and filed with registered deeds.
And there are inspections as the project develops to check, to see that they are complying as it's being built, not just at the end?
There, there are obviously building inspections throughout the whole process, the different trades, yes. And again, if there are issues that come up, they would be addressed during the construction process.
Thank you.
Are there others who would like to speak on this item? See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a conditional use permit for construction of a storage facility at 25th and Chandler.
Second. Motion by Mr. Carmichael, a second by Ms. Blood. It was all at once over on this side. Any discussion? See none, please vote. Mr. Shuchak, you have a comment?
Yes. The, the planning commission did make the recommendation regarding the doors and the roof. For, for us, when the building comes in and for Mr. Agarwal, I, I need to know whether you're going with that recommendation or going with what they basically submitted.
Mr. Carmichael.
Uh, my intention was not to go with that.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Need to clarify.
Any other discussion?
Did that change anybody's vote, knowing that? Okay. The vote is four to two, a motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11, resolutions. 11A, resolution number 2014 dash 22, approving BKD LLC as the auditing firm for the next three years. Mr. Severson?
Thank you, Mayor. I asked the, our audit committee to take this issue under advisement. Uh, we went, we met with the audit committee. They gave us, me and my staff, some homework. And we went out and we gathered the information and gave them back some results of our research. And the, the audit committee made a recommendation of which the, the city administrator and I concur. And I think-
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't notice this until I picked up the written document. Um, I guess I'm going to ask legal counsel, do we have an issue with the way this is presented to the public? Because in the written form, it stipulates five years and in the computer form, it's three years.
It was changed.
It should be what?
Five.
It should be five years.
The resolution in your packet said five.
Okay.
The agenda said three, because I copied it from three years ago when we did that. And then I, I corrected that.
So we need the, the resolution corrected in the-
No, the resolution is correct in the packet.
Resolution is consistent with the recommendation. It's just that the, the agenda as originally published online, which you may have on your computer screen, is, but the actual paper agenda set out for the public was corrected.
Yes, it was.
Mr. Cook.
I'd just like to make two quick comments or statements. I am on the audit committee and, and what Mitch, Rich Severson stated is correct. We did meet. We asked Rich and his staff to check in for something, check some things for us and get back to us, which they did. We met again, we discussed things. And I'm going to support this. However, I would like to make a motion to open this up for a public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I just want to give clarification. The, the second agenda, the amended agenda, was posted on Bellevue.net.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm just clarifying that to make sure that they, they know that it was. Because the discussion that we just had made it sound like the second one did not get posted. Um, and so in Kay's defense, I'm making sure that that, that is said. Also, um, one of the points that I don't think we've brought up is that we've ultimately saved the city at least $10,000 by negotiating this contract the way it is. And so we're, again, looking out for taxpayer dollars in the long term. I think it's going to serve our, our community, community much better than going out and looking for for new people to do the audit, because BKD- KD? Yeah. BKD has done such an effective job. I know several years ago, the council originally thought that we'd want to go out every three, four years and look for new people. Um, but based on new information that we've received, um, we feel that the most prudent action is to stay with the company that we have, keep the consistency and keep the forward momentum that we've been, um, receiving from this company to better our finance department and to better the work that's done. to better our finance department and to better the work that's done on behalf of the taxpayers.
With that said, I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on Resolution Number 2014-22.
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. When I was the City Council, we had the accounting firm, auditing firm, doing it for a number of years. I tried my best to get it cut down because I think they were doing as good a job. I don't agree that having the same one makes it any better. If you get professional auditing firms, there's no reason one can't step in even after one or two years. You want to do it for five years, there's going to be at least two, maybe three, new councilpeople on this council. And there might be a number of changes for their appointees. Why don't we let them decide instead of having you commit this firm to five years? It doesn't make sense. I don't know of any public firm that keeps on doing it would do that for five years. I don't know a single public firm that would, a private firm, I mean, that would do that. I would, I would, I would rather have you just do it for the one year and just see who the new people here are and let them, let them decide. Don't try to commit something to new people and new appointees maybe on this council when you don't have to do that. There, any, you get anybody who is a professional auditor's firm, they can do the job and step in. You don't have to have, there's no momentum to lose by having new firms come in and do the books. In fact, it might be interesting and refreshing if they did that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Blood.
And perhaps Councilman Cook can chime in on this. But we're not talking about a business, we're talking about a municipality. A municipality that has specific guidelines that we have to follow under both state and federal guidelines. And because of that, there's only specific people that we can use to do this type of work for our municipality. Now granted, there are choices besides BKD. But the issue is, and this is an issue that was discovered not only by the council, but specifically by the investigative group, you and Councilman, former Councilman Sandborn, the gentleman from Bellevue University, who else? I can't remember who else was on the committee. But what we found is, because of the consistency of these experts, we have every year been able to get better and better at our procedures, protecting our municipality from legal issues. And also getting a more effective flow of work from our employees as a result of it, because they've been guided into a better direction. And so this is not something that you can say, well, every year we should try somebody different. Because what's going to happen is, you do lose momentum. You do end up starting from square one, and what's going to happen is, is chaotic. We are on a forward momentum, a path of forward momentum. If we stop that momentum, we go back to the mess that we had six years ago. And we did have a mess six years ago. Now, we have procedures, procedures that protect us legally. Now, our employees know what is expected of them, not only administratively, but legally, under both state and federal guidelines. And we're saving the taxpayers at least $10,000 in the process by signing the extended agreement. Where, you can't compare, that you can hire anybody. That's just not true. We can't hire some, I'm sorry, you've had your turn to speak, you can sit down. I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to do your job. But, but we've had that opportunity. We don't have the opportunity, we can't hire just some CPA down the street. We have to hire specific people that they deal with municipalities. And to say otherwise is just ignorant.
Mr. Cook.
I can make a couple of comments to that, Carol. Couple of things that stood out for me was that there was only a few firms around here that would probably do this type of work. And we had talked about a couple of the firms, and I had a personal experience when I was sitting on another, on another commission of what I thought was a very negative experience with one of the firms that we had discussed. Also, some of the things, and I'm going to probably say this wrong, but the partner that did this, DeVore?
Robin?
Oh, sorry.
Who is in the audience this evening?
I think this would be, no, I'm going to say something wrong and I'm going to get caught here. But I think you've done this for two years, or into the, maybe your first year you assisted, but the last two years you've sort of been in charge of our audit, if I understood that right.
Should we, should we have Robin come to the podium, please?
But also, there was a saving issue, I think a consistency issue. And I think some of the things that have been identified, I know that Rich said that generally we've knocked them out. There is still one pending issue that we will continue to work on from the audit. It just seemed to me, we looked at some other cities and what they were doing, their prices versus our prices, our size of our city, the size of other cities. And when you looked at the package, I just felt that this was the best route to go. I probably had a few more notes, but I had to, I had to give them back to Rich after our meeting. But I, I don't know if there's anything else that we really, I know there was other things we talked about, but that were the things that sort of stood out to me, for me. And it was a consensus. There was three of us, Mr. Sandborn, the gentleman from Bellevue University, I'm sorry, I can't remember his name.
Mr. Blazek.
Blazek. Of course, at one meeting, Mr. Burlowitz was there, Mr. Severson was there, Mark was there. So I, I think we had some good conversation, good input, and just the picture, the total set of circumstances, I just think this is the right direction to go.
Mr. Severson, would you like to comment?
Yeah, the comment on the partner in charge. Robin DeVore has been the partner in charge and the person that we've seen here the last couple of years. I think what we saw before was Roger Watten was involved somewhat heavily in that. And he was the face that would come and discuss it. So anyway, they, they do have BKD, they do have several partners that review the audit. And then they're also subject to peer review. So not that there aren't other good auditing firms out there, we, we talked about a couple of them. But as far as the quality goes, and as Councilwoman Blood mentioned, we're on a pretty good trajectory. It's, we're not perfect, but we hope to get there. And I think this is the, probably the best way to get there.
Robin, would you like to summarize?
I can just clarify a little bit from what, from what Rich said. We do have a two-partner review system. So while I may be your, your key partner at this point in time, all of our work is reviewed by another partner before it goes out the door. So from a quality control standpoint, even if you've seen me for the last several years, there's somebody else besides me that's looking at it. And we've had three different people in that, in that quality control review as well. So just, just to give you a little comfort that there are others looking at it besides, besides just me and the other team that we have on staff.
Thank you. Mr. Preister.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight and sharing that. A couple of things. One, it was mentioned that in our past audits, there was one thing that was left that we hadn't done. I believe each year we have improved, you've made recommendations, we've done all those. I think that one thing was simply that we didn't hire an additional employee who would have full-time responsibility for doing some financing. And so I'm, I'm just checking because I don't think it was a technical deficiency that we haven't done. I think we've done all of those. I think it was having an additional staff person, which some people who don't like paying taxes might not want us to do anyway. And that that person wouldn't really add a whole lot more, given the financial constraints. But if that's a kind of clear question...
Well, I, I'm trying to think back what the recommendation is, but I don't believe we ever made a recommendation that you needed to hire someone else. I believe the open issue related to drafting the financial statements and journal entries. And, and that's one of the things that I know that the City Finance Department has been working on as far as gathering those information, that information and being able to prepare those financial statements. And I, Rich can answer this.
That's correct. And, and that's where this additional person would come in so that we could have a full set of, of GAAP financials ready for the auditors each year.
The other thing that I would like you to comment on. You have been doing individual audits, and the scope of that audit is just not one single area. But it's a total audit of all departments, all city finances, it's total encompassing. Is that correct?
It's an audit of the financial statements as a whole for the city. And we also do what's called a single audit related to the federal, federal awards programs. So we've selected, based on certain criteria, at least two major programs to audit specifically the compliance related to federal programs as well.
And there are government auditing standards that are different than auditing a private business. Is that correct?
Absolutely. You, the city follows governmental accounting standards, which are different than what a private company would follow. And there are also government auditing standards which are different.
Right. So we can feel pretty confident that the auditing that we've been getting has been meeting all of those standards and that our finance department has been meeting and getting high marks on all of those things with a possible exception of having a staff person devoted to collecting more data. And that's a finance decision based on us not wanting to hire somebody. You don't have to answer that part.
Are there any other questions for Robin DeVore? See none, thank you very much.
Well, I'm still Dorothy Draper. I would like to comment how pleased I was that in the agenda thing for the public, when I was scrolling down through the information about BKD and that you had the salary range for them for the, for the years. And explained, I was really appreciative that you explained why the salary was going down because of the training and all the stuff that it takes in the first year, first two years when you get to know the company and the people. And I think it's great that you're going to stay with the same company, you have my full support on that. Because when you get to know, any person that goes in and gets to know a company, or in this case, the city, they get to know who they're going to work with, the people they're working with gets to know what they're going to need to have ready. They get to know the personalities, they know how to deal with them, and they, and they know what to have ready for them. And then when these, when these guys come in, they know who to go to first, they know who to go to next. And all that training is taken care of. And every year, the work gets a little easier and they can get done a little faster, so you can pay them a little less. So I was really thankful that you put that in there. You have my full support on this company, and I appreciate the input that you gave us, gave us on the Internet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Draper, I appreciate the progress the city has made in the area of audits. And because, as my understanding is, prior to six years ago, we really didn't do that in the city. And that's why we got in the trouble that we were in. So it's been a learning process for the city and the employees. And, and I think it's good, I think it's good to stay with a company that you have confidence in. I mean, we've all gone through the experience of trying a new contractor, a new vendor, or whatever it is. And there's this honeymoon period where you're checking each other out and they're deciding whether they like working with you, and you're deciding whether you like working with them. And it takes a year or two before you get really comfortable with each other. And obviously, after two years working with this company, you have gotten comfortable with them. And so I don't see any problem at all doing a five-year contract with a company that you have a, a good track record with. For, for those of you on the council, I think just to keep in mind though that not to get in the mindset that we're going to stay with the same company for imper perpetuity. That there may come a point in time, not because we're displeased with the company, but it makes sense that I think after maybe a 10-year period, which at the end of five years from now, this will be probably seven or eight years, that it just might make sense to try somebody else just because when people get stuck in their ways, and it's just nice to have new ideas and fresh eyes. So I would just say in the back of your minds, I would shoot for, after 10 years, to be looking to try somebody else to see what they can bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council, Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 2014-22, approving the BKD LLC as the auditing firm for the next five years for the city of Bellevue.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number 12, Current Business. 12A is under consent, 12B under consent, C consent, and D under consent. 12E, Approval of Release and Refile for the Date of Reconvenience for CDBG Housing Rehab Project Number 2011-32110 Power Drive. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the release and to refile the date of reconvenience for CDBG Housing Rehab Project Number 2011-3, specifically 2110 Power Drive.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. F, Approval of Documents to Release the City's Lean for CDBG Housing Rehab Project 2A at 2828 Olive Street. Mr. Carmichael.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve of the documents to release the city's lean on the CDBG Housing Rehab Project 2A at 2828 Olive Street.
Second. Second by Ms. Sanyuk. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12G, Accept Bids and Award Contract for CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Project 2012-1 to R&amp;R Construction for $19,060. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bids and award the contract for the CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Project 2012-1 to R&amp;R Construction for $19,060.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12H, Accept Bids and Award Contract for CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Project 2013-2 to R&amp;R Construction for $8,794.50. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the acceptance of the bids and award contract for CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Project 2013-2 to R&amp;R Construction for $8,794.50.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12I, Request to Purchase Column Lifts for the Fleet Maintenance Department. Mr. Cook.
I'll make a motion to request, to approve the request to purchase column lifts for the Fleet Maintenance Department. And Mr. Roberts, I just got, should I put in there with Clay's Pumping Equipment for $33,422? I'll make that my motion.
Did you get all of that, Kay? Thank you. And second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number 13, Public Request to Be Heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number 35 regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city official, and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is elected official, a city official, employee, or member of the general public. And City Code 2-68 regarding the manners of addressing the councils. Copies of the aforementioned are posted on the outside of the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes. I'll go ahead and close the pub.
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. First thing was, last time I spoke, two weeks ago, I talked about the rules you give us and the rules you're supposed to follow, you didn't follow the rules again two weeks ago. When I spoke about wanting to do an independent audit for the finance department, one councilperson... person indirectly spoke back to me by asking the city attorney a question. And that was the same as responding to me as far as I'm concerned. Plus, the city attorney at that time had said about the rule about not having to respond back, and yet he did. In regard to that, I still think we should have an independent audit for the Finance Department. And I volunteered that time to find somebody to do that. And I think it shouldn't be hired, it should be somebody that isn't selected in the, either in the administration or the council to do this. Example is that it took me about two years of asking about the $540,000 that the fire department couldn't collect and for, to get a response. That should never have been. It should have never been two years for, for me to get the answer. And the only answer I got so far is the exact, approximate amount of about 2%, which is not very much out of the $540,000. The other thing is that Mr. Curtin, Eugene Curtin from the Bellevue Leader, wrote an article about, about that $540,000. And that is on, that article is on my website and I made some comments about that and on that article too. Now there also, he wrote an article again on July 20, July 30. And that one was titled, "The Battle of Words Continues." And there's a little confusion because I've been, Mr. Curtin thinks that apparently that the financial statement and the monthly balance sheet are the same. I've been getting the financial, monthly financials for the last three, four years. I don't think anywhere near as much of them as maybe some people do. I don't think they're, they're that, that good. But what I've been asking for is a monthly balance sheet. That's what I've been asking for. And we haven't had that. And until we get that each month, so we can see where we stand, I just can't comprehend how, how, how you can run a city. That's everything else I want to talk about. Well, he want, he wanted me to, you know, I'm going to respond to this in my, in my comments about, on his article, but I'll respond to it in, in public also. But the Finance Director doesn't think I understand, understand the cash-based system. And I think I do, and I'll explain that more and go more detail on that in a later time. Thank you.
Are there others? See none, I'll go ahead and close a public request to be heard. Mr. Cook?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? Please vote. Thank you. Next meeting will be August the 25th. Thank you and have a good night.